And that respect and felt approaching this in the most conservative way of more variances are being requested because of the way this is being constructed was the way to address it.
Is there any further discussion by commissioners?
I just wanted to highlight there was some questions about the cars that are parked on the lot. I just wanted to bring up the issue of code enforcement and I know the applicant is not he's not the owner of the property, but just as a reminder, there are weeds and grass that are growing up there formerly, the cars should not be parked there. We always encourage the applicant as they go through this process to try to make sure they're in compliance with everything that's there, so.
Okay. We have finding the fact on the first one, well, how are we going to handle?
All three are combined.
All three are all combined into one sheet, okay. If you would please go through the findings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is PZ 17-008 Elliott Carpentry LLC and LDD Group LLC regarding 47 East 55th Street and Westmont. Request for variances to allow, one, relief from the minimum square foot per building in the R4 general residence district; two, a single-family semi-detached dwelling within a required front yard setback in the R4 general residence district; and three, a single-family semi-detached dwelling within a required rear yard setback in the R4 general residence district. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return and permit it to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. Findings of fact, due to its location along heavily trafficked 55th Street and given its R4 zoning district zoning, this property is best developed with a single-family semi-detached residence versus a single-family residence. In order to provide a usable backyard for the residents and in order to provide the number of bedrooms and other amenities required by today's homeowners, these variances are necessary. If the applicant were to reduce the size and location of the proposed structure to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, the applicant could not yield a reasonable return and the end product would not appeal to today's home buyers in the Westmont market. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Findings of fact, the slot has remained vacant for a long period of time and was previously improved as a gas station. Given its location, this property is unlikely to develop as a single-family residence and a previous request for dense townhomes in this property with multiple variances was rejected by the village board. This proposal represents the highest and best use of the property and the proposed variances are reasonable particularly when compared with neighboring development of a similar nature. Criteria number three, the variances, if granted, will not alter the essential character of locality. Findings of fact, the adjacent properties to the east and west are also zoned R4 general residence district. Similar duplexes exist to the immediate west of this property which were constructed on smaller lots with more extreme setback variances. Given the location of this property and the surrounding development, the proposed development with the requested variances will complement and enhance the surrounding neighborhood and will not alter the essential character of the area.
Do you agree or disagree with the findings?
Why don't you just say agree? Why don't you just say if you agree?
If you agree with these, please raise your hand. Okay, we're 100% in agreement. Okay, now we're going to go to first motion, zoning code variance request for relief from minimum square feet per building in R4 general residence district. Motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bartel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thomas. Roll call, please.
Doug Carmichael votes yes. Thomas Sharp?
Yes.
Molly Van Buren?
Yes.
Craig Thomas?
Yes.
Janice Bartel?
Yes.
Okay, again, we're unanimous in agreement. Okay, the second, zoning code variance request to allow for construction of a single-family semi-detached dwelling within a required front yard setback in R4 general residence district. So moved. Moved by Commissioner Thomas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sharp. Have a roll call, please. A roll call.
Thomas Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren?
Yes.
Craig Thomas?
Yes.
Janice Bartel?
Yes.
And Doug Carmichael, yes.
Okay, unanimous again. The third motion is zoning code variance request to allow for construction of a single-family semi-detached dwelling within a required rear yard setback in R4 general residence district.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bartel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sharp. Roll call, please.
Craig Thomas?
Yes.
Janice Bartel?
Yes.
Carmichael votes yes. And Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
And Mr. Van Buren?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, and on the last one is site and landscaping plan approval. So moved.
Second.
With Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Bartel. Are there any further questions on this motion? If not, roll call, please.
Ms. Bartel?
Yes.
Carmichael votes yes. Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren?
Yes.
And Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, you've received approval from this board. Your next step will be going before the village board and you can check with the staff here as to when that deed will be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Second petitioner is Napleton Westmont Imports regarding the property located at 301 and 311 East Ogden Avenue, Westmont for the following. Special to operate an automotive dealership in a B2 general business district. And second is a site and landscaping plan approval. If you can state your name.
Ryan Ponton for Napleton.
Mark Greco, Napleton Porsche.
Matt Richardson, Napleton Porsche.
Okay. Okay, basically, the Porsche dealership will be under construction commencing at the end of May, so we'll need this special use on the other parcel in order to continue dealership operations. It's also a safety issue in terms of keeping our customers safe and not having them come in through the dealership while the construction's going on. It really won't be feasible, it wouldn't be safe, so that's the reason we need to use the additional parcel. In terms of specifics of the construction, may be able to chime in?
Yeah, so, once the construction starts, we plan on moving the dealership employees down to the other lot, again, for customers to drop their cars off, for them to be safe, construction's going on, we don't want anything to happen to them or the cars or anything like that, so we need the use of that building in order to do that.
Okay. Steph?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to give a little background if most of the commissioners remember. This is the previous Alpha Motors site, so for several years there was a used car dealership that operated here until the floods of 2013, at which time the parking lot on the site flooded and the dealership lost its inventory and subsequently went out of business. The property sat vacant for many years after that and the biggest constraint of the property is the fact that there are stormwater problems that exist on the property. About a year ago, this commission was approached by a used car dealership that had been located outside of the village, so it would have been a single location to propose using the site for car sales, which was both denied here and through village board. One of the largest constraints was that there did not seem that there was accommodation for the fact that they could respond quickly to any kind of storm event that would jeopardize their inventory. So what's different between that proposal and the proposal that's here before us? Well, first, the applicants have purchased the property. This is not a property that's being leased, so they have a vested interest in the property at this point. As the applicant had indicated, their current Porsche dealership, which did receive approvals through both this commission and village board, to combine what was the old Lamborghini building with their current Porsche building will be underway soon. So they do have the constraints that they need to relocate not just inventory but safety for their current employees and their customers. They did receive a temporary parking approval directly through village board for this property shortly after they purchased it, and that was so they could start parking cars there. They weren't permitted to sell cars out of the property because that does require the special use. So what they've now approached us with is a special use. Part of that special use is they need to screen the cars for pickup, drop-off, the things that are there for service to the surrounding uses. So part of this is they have proposed a significant landscaping improvement. So they're taking the landscaping that's there that really hasn't been maintained for these last several years, doing significant improvements, notably street trees along Ogden Avenue and along Blackhawk to kind of bring the property up to a standard. You've heard us a lot recently talk about the corridor, so Ogden Avenue, where we're requesting that all the businesses and particularly the dealerships make the investment as they improve their properties to give us a nicer streetscape, to actually bring a lot more greenery up to Ogden Avenue. So that is why there's a site landscaping approval with this. Some other things that the applicant is doing is there's two existing pole signs that are on the property that I don't think either one of them are in compliance with the requirements of our current sign code, whereas the last applicant was going to be requesting a variance to use those signs, which never solidified. This applicant has actually will bring the property into compliance, remove those existing two pole signs, replace one of those signs with the freestanding sign that meets current code, and then they are permitted to have two signs on the building, so everything will be in compliance with the code and that.
Is that a monument sign or a pole sign that they're?
It would be considered a monument sign because it is not on a pole, it still is a 16-feet height, if I'm correct, probably very similar to the sign that you have on at the 201 property. So it would be 16 feet tall, I want to say it's probably four or six feet wide, and then we are requesting landscaping as part of the approval around the monument sign, which is what we require for the signs to be freestanding. And as always, let's talk about the stormwater. So the applicant right now has not requested or been requested. So the applicant right now has not requested or been required to do any stormwater improvements. What it is, is this is a user that has two other locations along Ogden Avenue. They have expressed to us that if there is a storm event, they've got porters, they've got people on staff, they've got people local, and they've got places to move the cars if necessary. They have indicated that after they go through the construction process, they will reevaluate how they're going to use the site and will reapproach improvements to the stormwater facilities at that time. So it is not a requirement of the special use and staff is satisfied that they have available properties nearby and available staff to move the cars if necessary. So as always, I'm available for any questions.
I have a question of the applicant. Obviously, this is temporary and as he stated, that you'll reassess once you've completed your new construction, but what are your long-term plans for this property, other than a remediation of the problem with the water? But I mean, is this going to be, continue to be a sales lot or do you have any idea about what you're going to be doing down the road?
At this point?
Yeah, at this point, we don't, we haven't set that in stone, but from my understanding, that's going to be an extension of the dealership and that will become the pre-owned inventory lot. Again, that is not concrete, but that was the initial thought.
Okay. So, this time, is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak on this issue? Not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll go to the commissioners. Commissioner Carmichael?
This seems to me to be a logical and a sound business risk for you, and it's been a difficult site for a long time and I'm happy to see it go to a use like this.
Commissioner Thomas?
My first reaction was why? Why would you put such nice cars in harm's way, historically speaking? So you have room and personnel to move them out once?
Should anything?
Tom Skilling?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
And I know the sewers have been, sewers are rotted and we monitored obviously the rainfall from last weekend, which is pretty intense, so our eyes are on it. We have a separate storage facility which we can move the cars to pretty quickly.
So every time it rains, it gets your attention?
Oh, yeah, yes.
And that other storage facility is very close, within blocks, so if we needed to move cars in a rapid manner, we can do that.
So you can do it in a rapid manner and keep your staff and inventory safe in the process of moving inventory from A to B?
Correct.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Sharp?
Just a couple of questions. The, can we talk a little bit about the existing building that's on site and what your plans are in the short term, temporary term, or the building itself?
So the short term of it would be, the technicians, the goal is to have the technicians stay where they're currently at in the current building. And then the advisors, myself, would move down to the other building where customers can drop their cars off, so they're not pulling onto the lot where there's construction taking place, risking their cars, risking the employees and risking customer safety, and at which point, we would then shuttle the cars between that lot and the current building.
So for this temporary use, it'll be pretty much the sales advisors there and maybe FNI?
Good, correct.
Operations out there.
Correct.
Any modifications to the exterior planned during this?
Not at this point, no.
Other than signage? It's pretty drab. It is not very Porsche-y. What about, you mentioned in here that there's going to be cleaning and detailing of cars on the site. Where would that take place?
That hasn't been decided at this point. We're not sure if that's going to be onsite or if that's going to be offsite.
Okay. I think the code does not permit detailing within view of the street, is that correct, Joe?
I think that's one of the special conditions that is typically added to the, any dealership. Basically, we ask that all activities occur indoors, not outdoors, and not within view of the street. The site is configured a little bit strange there because actually, there's three lots on that property, so it's technically 301, 309, and 311. The building's actually sitting on 311. So that property is much longer and there is actually a portion behind the building that can't be seen from any angle?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. That's a good spot for detailing and washing.
And then if I'm correct, there is a bay door to pull vehicles into the property?
Correct. Yeah, if we did decide to do that, there is completely in the back of the building, not in view of the street at all.
Okay. Two more, just two more. So lighting that's on the site that's currently code compliant for terms of foot candles outside the property and?
Lighting was not a requirement that we asked them to give us photometrics for because I don't, if I'm correct, you're not modifying the lighting that's there? Or are you replacing?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
If there was a replacement, then we would ask them for photometrics and ask them to be compliant. So at this point, they're just using what we would consider as legal conforming lighting that's there. I don't know if there's actually an issue with offsite glare. I don't know that those lights have been turned on at night?
So they may not work?
Since 2013, so I don't know what the overall net effect is there.
Okay, last question. What's the possibility, and this is the village, I think, first, of the building being removed in the future and it's just a used inventory lot? Because when you said that, you know, the future could just be used inventory, that kind of caught my attention, that we don't really want an unmanned inventory lot sitting there on Ogden Avenue?
Minus the building, you said?
Right.
So if the building goes away, they would have to put in full stormwater improvements and come back for site plan approval.
Okay.
I believe that would amend the special use and then if it does go to a, you know, complete used dealership, we would put a condition in the special use that they have Porsche cars for sale, probably along the front row, you know, just to, you know, ensure that quality appearance along Ogden Avenue. That would be a condition of the board approval.
Okay, so if there was any plan to demolish in the future, we would see it again?
Absolutely.
All right, that's it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bartel?
Actually, Jill just answered my question and it was, what is the long-term thought you had about the flood problem? And after the work, the construction's done, then the temporary is not as needed, and so I just want to assure that it will be aesthetically nice and pleasing for, as a village?
Of course.
Lot. And that, I guess we want assurance that that will be the case.
We'll maintain the high standards.
Okay, thanks.
With, in response to that comment as well, I'd like to echo some of Joe's comments with regard to our strategic plan, which you all know we've been working on hard the past year. One of our main focuses was our top 10 list, which included beautifying our streetscapes, and this is obviously a very high priority corridor, and we're glad to see that substantial improvement in landscaping and street trees that they are putting along Ogden Avenue. You know, I think that'll be a big improvement and, you know, we'd like to see more businesses do that, so.
And actually, more landscaping will absorb the water. You know, the more foliage and plants and trees, some of that water will go, be suctioned into the trees and the foliage, but the flooding problem is a serious one. I just hope you know what you're getting into here because that is a problem down there. So, you know, I would just hope that it would be remediated after the construction is over.
We will take care of things, yes.
I'm supportive.
And also, in response to Commissioner Sharp's comment about the lighting, the existing poles aren't in the best shape, but they are flat lens recessed, so there shouldn't be any issue with light pollution, but they would be, you know, required to meet photometrics if they change them.
Thank you.
There are three lots here. Have you talked at all about lot consolidation yet or is this going to be when you?
I figure afterwards, we haven't really discussed it yet.
Haven't discussed it yet, because obviously, if you're going to be doing, treating the lot for water drainage and storage and so on, it probably would want to consolidate the three parcels. I don't have any further questions. Do you have any comments, Commissioner? I mean, John?
No, I don't, thanks.
Okay.
Okay. One comment. It's a special use for an automobile dealership and we have some standard special conditions that we impose by ordinance at the village board level anytime there's an auto dealer. So we don't allow them to display cars in elevated racks, we don't allow loudspeakers, we don't allow balloons and streamers and some of those cheesy special event-type promotional items. Prohibit test driving on the side streets. There's a couple other standard ones that we typically impose that will be part of the ordinance. We may have a discussion at the board level of this long-term plans, is that this is going to be essentially a used car lot in the future, even though it has the Porsche name, whether, you know, the board has any suggestions about, you know, whether they want a row of Porsche cars up along Ogden, so at least has a, not a used car lot appearance.
Sure. And the cars will all be certified pre-owned cars, so it'll be the higher end of the used car.
Okay, any other comments?
Staff does have one question for Mr. Zemanak. I know that the special use is distinguished differently versus a dealership, which kind of encompasses both new and used, versus just a strictly used. So if this was converted to a used facility, would we look at the umbrella that this is still a dealership along Ogden Avenue, this is one of the secondary uses for that, or would they need to reapproach this for another special use approval just to have used sales specifically on that lot?
You know, it's a bit unique because it's a standalone lot from their primary dealership, but I would treat this, historically, as we've treated new car dealerships that have ancillary used car sales, that it's just a new car automobile dealership, and they may, I mean, they might have a combination in the future of some new and used cars, but we'll have to see, but I don't think that's necessary. One other comment with the special conditions, there's a fence in the back. We'd probably have a requirement that you continually maintain the fence, so if it falls down, put it back up. Maintain the trees. One dies, replace it, things like that.
Anything else? Not, we'll ask for a reading on the finding of fact.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is PZ 17-009, Napleton Westmont Imports regarding 301 and 311 East Ogden Avenue, Westmont. Request for a special use to allow an automobile, automotive dealership in the B2 general business district. Criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Findings of fact, the proposed automobile dealership is consistent with numerous other automobile dealerships along Ogden Avenue. The dealership will not utilize loudspeakers or otherwise pose a detriment to the public health, safety, comfort, or welfare. The dealership will operate during typical automobile dealership hours and will not generate adverse light, noise, or other impacts. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. Findings of fact, the proposed use is consistent with surrounding automobile dealership and commercial uses. The property has been used as an automobile dealership since approximately 1986 without causing negative impacts on surrounding properties. This use will not cause substantial harm to surrounding properties. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Findings of fact, surrounding properties are fully developed and utilizing this existing lot and building will not impede future development of the area. Criteria number four, that adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Findings of fact, the property is currently served by adequate utilities, accessways, and other necessary facilities. The property is fully improved, but does not contain stormwater drainage. The applicant's activities upon the property will not worsen existing stormwater drainage concerns. Criteria number five, that the adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Findings of fact, the property is currently served by adequate means of ingress and egress and is served by public sidewalks. This use is not expected to cause traffic congestion onto Ogden Avenue or the neighboring streets. Criteria number six, that the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. Findings of fact, this use otherwise conforms to the regulations of the B2 general business district and the applicant is enhancing the property through increased landscaping by installing code compliance, and by installing code compliance signage. No variances are sought in conjunction with the special use request. Criteria number seven, the proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition two. Findings of fact, the applicant is providing sufficient landscaping and setbacks which will screen vehicles awaiting service or customers' pickup.
If you're in agreement, raise your hand. We're all in agreement? Okay. We're looking for a motion for special use permit request to operate an automotive dealership in the B2 general business district. So moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Carmichael and seconded by Commissioner Thomas. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Carmichael votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Okay, 5-0. Okay, and we'll look for a site and landscape plan approval.
So moved?
Moved by Commissioner Bartel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sharp. We have a roll call, please. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael votes yes. Commissioner Van Buren?
Yes.
Again, unanimous. Okay, you have the approval of the zoning plan commission. Your next stop will be at the village board, and again, you can check what staff is doing at meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And is our next petitioner here?
Dr. Fleck is at his Park District meeting, is, should be here shortly.
Okay, do we want to get started on it or do we just find something else to do?
Just to get recessed.
Okay, we'll have a recess until the Park District.
We need a motion and a second and a roll, or a voice vote, have a recess.
Okay, motion to recess for how many minutes?
Till the Park District arrives.
Well, I can tell you that he, Mr. Fleck did ask staff what time he felt his case might get before the commission, and I would say 10 or 15 minutes before he can arrive here.
Okay, let's say for a 15-minute recess. Who moved that? Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thomas. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we?
Recessed.
We ran that through, didn't we? Bartel, seconded by Commissioner Carmichael. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back in session. Our next committee, our petitioner is Westmont Park District and WP, BP Leasing Corp. Our next committee, our petitioner is Westmont Park District and WP, BP Leasing Corp. I think I'll have to swear him in, right?
Yeah.
I swear that testimony I'm about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help God.
I do.
Okay, if you can identify yourself and proceed with your petition.
Thank you. Bob Fleck, Executive Director, Westmont Park District. It wasn't that long ago that I was in front of you for another project for the Park District. So we've got a lot going on. There's been a lot happening at the Park District. This particular one that we're in front of you for tonight was something that was rather unexpected for the Park District and, you know, what we do and the services we perform here in the community. The request is for special use for the Park District Maintenance Facility at 200 East Quincy Street on Burlington, I'm sorry, on Quincy Street near the railroad tracks. And per the comprehensive plan for the village, parks and maintenance facilities for park services are special uses that are allowed and permitted in residential districts. So that's what we are here to present to you tonight and seek your approval on before we go to the village board. Little bit of history on this. We have been for, I believe, 31 years at 55 East Burlington Street. That has been the home for the Park District Maintenance Facility in property that is owned by the Village of Westmont. It has served us well. It has been a win-win, a great relationship, and the price has been right. But it has come to our attention late in the fall that at some point, the village is going to need that property back for mainly public works improvements and expansion. We were looking to try and find an opportunity to see if we could, how far that could extend out. It was an unknown. Would it be possible to get maybe a two-year notice written into the lease for that property? And then we were informed by the village manager on December 2nd that, no, you need to plan now. Maintenance facility, purchase of land, preparation or construction of a maintenance facility was not something we had planned, we had not budgeted for. So we are taking a complete left turn here at the Park District to make this happen so we can continue to maintain our facilities and our parks here in Westmont to the standard that we've always done. So where we are today, this has happened all very rapidly. We have looked at park sites, we've looked at properties around the community, we have also seeked the guidance of Larry Forsberg, who really has his finger on the pulse of what's happening here in the community, to look for some advice, what's out there, can you help us? We kept coming back to the property at 200 East Quincy. It is centrally located, it has been abandoned for many years. It's owned, but it's basically falling into disrepair. It is our intent to acquire this property. We close pending approval of the special use on July 7th to acquire this and turn this into our permanent maintenance home for the Park District. So again, we are here seeking approval for it. There are some other behind-the-scenes happenings and workings that have been going on that I'd like to tell you a little bit about. First off, let me show you the location and for the public. I know it was in your packets, but I'm going to use the overhead. There's actually two parcels there. The main one is 200 East Quincy, then there's kind of a storage facility just to the west. It was a package deal. The owner is selling both parcels. And if you recall, this is the old Westmont Building Supply. For the most part, it was drywall supply and delivery and other construction materials. Even personally, when I was working on my house and over the years at the Park District, we used to procure building materials from this particular owner. So Quincy Street, this is the main office space, dry storage in the back here, open air storage and open air storage.
Bob, we're waiting for the video link to catch up.
Oh, it hasn't kicked in yet. I'm sorry.
Right there.
I'm looking at it on my monitor, I don't know what's wrong.
It's not functioning.
Oh, okay, I apologize for that. I could hold it up. I don't know if the camera can zoom in. I think most everybody here is probably familiar with the property, those in the public may not. But for us, there's so many things about this property that serve us perfectly. Again, it's centrally located, it's got the right bones, it's got the right sized space, it's a little bit larger than what we're in now, gives us room for a little bit of expansion. And just to the west is this other open air storage, and this was where they just previously stored pallets of drywall in here, and then they would just load up the trucks, haul them on out. Now, I think we can all agree, though, that the property is not in the best condition. Again, it's falling apart, there might even be rodents that are in the roof, the roof is leaking. It doesn't look the best. Over the years, at some point, they put in this off-street parking with all the pavement in front. We have been working with the village manager and Public Works, and we're going to come in there as a team if this happens, and we're going to remove all this pavement out front and restore it to a tree-lined residential parkway with a sidewalk. I provided a drawing in your packets as well that shows exactly what that could look like, and this is based off our survey. It fits, it works, we can engineer it and plant it up exactly as you see here. And one of the things that we want to do as well, all the exposed fencing at the gates, we want to put a windscreen material, the same material that you see in our parks, on our backstops, on our tennis courts, we would put that across the fencing as an additional screening to hide what is happening inside there from the residents. One thing I want you to know is that we've heard from some of the residents there on the street, and they're actually quite excited about this. They said they are tired of looking at this abandoned property and the fact that they can't, doesn't seem to have any interest in it. And I know, talking with some of the village staff, that unless a developer can acquire an entire semblage of two blocks, it's just not big enough to be able to do anything with. So again, we're going to clean this up, we're going to take care of it. And here's a letter that I've received from a Robert Breyer, whose front door literally looks at the front door of this property. So, Mr. Robert Fleck, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for our conversation on Thursday, April 13th, 2017 regarding the existing building at 200 East Quincy. I'm very happy to hear that this will be the future home for the Westmont Park District Maintenance Division. I welcome you to the neighborhood and look forward to having you as my neighbor, though I understand it will be a while before all is done and you occupy the building. To have an occupied, maintained building is much better for the neighborhood and village than a vacant building that can fall into disrepair, eyesore hazard for our community. I live across from 200 East Quincy and had a good rapport with Westmont Building Products when they were there, and I feel that they will also have a good rapport. I feel that we will also have a good rapport, as I have met many of the Westmont Park District employees while walking my dog at the village parks. They are respectful, courteous, friendly. Sincerely, Robert Breyer, 209 East Quincy Street. So there is neighborhood support for this particular project as well. Timing of this, again, budget is a challenge for the Park District. We had not prepared for this in our capital planning and budgeting. We're looking to do this over a two-year period. We would start with the frontage, clean it up with Public Works this summer, and restore it to a parkway. Take care of the facade of it, we've got to restore the outside. We also know we have to upgrade the water service in here as well. Having talked with the fire department, it needs to be sprinkled. We would come in with a four-inch water main, two-inch domestic. That has to be done as well, another cost. And then, of course, there's the rest of the property. The fencing needs to be taken care of, need to clean up the dry storage and make that a usable space as well. So there's going to be some permitting. We have to redo the interior of the office space and put in 80 accessible bathrooms. We've got to rework some of the ingress egress. So we're working with the building department to make all this happen and get this permitted appropriately so we can continue on again and make this our permanent home. Now, the other thing that I want to touch on, it was in your packet in the recommendation from staff, is the rear of the property. I know there's a desire to improve the corridor along the rail line for all the commuters that drive back and forth. We agree, it's an eyesore. Personally, I think the responsibility is, and the problem is more with the BNSF, not necessarily the property owners. We have some challenges. We want to work with the village. We want to clean things up. But I think it's important I share with you the challenges from an engineering perspective and the financial hardship of trying to screen this on our property. And I wish I had the monitor working here to show you some very good descriptive pictures of what we're dealing with. We want to go in, put in some elbow grease on it. Maybe we can put in a higher fence at the back if the, if we can get a variance for that, and put the green mesh windscreens on there as well to help screen off the interior of the property. But to be able to come in and provide a full landscape buffer that is evergreens and deciduous shrubs, our property, all the way up to the fence line, which is the property line, is actually pavement. I know from a distance, it looks like it might be gravel, it's not. It was paved, it's asphalt. Goes right up to the fence line. And our fence, for probably half the space, this linear footage, is retaining about two feet of the berm of the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railway, and it's all shale. I don't know how you're going to plant that, I don't know how you're going to clean it up, but just looking at this today, we'd be looking at, without dealing with the railway and their berm, minimum $50,000 just to try and do something that's going to provide some screening along that frontage right there on the back of the property. I'm going to share a couple pictures here, but the one that is very descriptive is this one that shows our fence retaining about two feet of the embankment on the railroad. It's not an easy solution, but that doesn't mean we want to come in and be able to clean something up, paint the back of the buildings, maybe put up our logo on the backside. As I said, maybe we can work out something on the fencing and some screening along there as a more reasonable solution to this request and the desire to clean up that corridor. So I want to pass these around as well. Oh, sorry, I would have brought more copies if I'd have known the monitor wasn't working. So that's kind of a snapshot of where we're at, what we plan to do with the property, and what we're looking for and hope to work with the village on. So we are, again, seeking approval for a special use of a maintenance facility for the Park District at 200 East Quincy Street. Any questions?
First, we'll go to staff, and do you have anything you'd like to explain before we go to the public?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just highlight some of the details that Mr. Fleck has already presented. So this property is actually zoned R5, so it's residential, it's zoned for high-density residential, so that's your multifamily properties all the way down to single-family. This entire stretch along Quincy Street was rezoned as residential many years ago, even though most of the stretch, I would say, is more of a manufacturing industrial in terms of the building makeup that's there. So briefly, I want to talk about legal conforming versus legal non-conforming. So there are many businesses that still operate along Quincy Street that we would consider legal conforming. So basically, those businesses have always been in operation, so their status, even though they're in a zoning that is for residential, is protected. It's when that business goes away or that business use goes away that they lose their legal status. If I say anything wrong, I'm sure Mr. Zemanak will correct me. In this case, this is the old Westmont Building Products, so there hasn't been an operating business in this property for quite some time, so it hasn't been reused. Mr. Fleck is correct that, you know, it's, the challenge of these properties is really a consolidation challenge. This property has, the village has been approached many times for businesses that would like to use this property, and because of the residential zoning, staff has always informed any person pursuing this building that it cannot be reused as it exists, that the adaptive reuse of this property would be as a redevelopment as a residential. So in this case, this is a special use for a park, or in this case, a park facility. So whereas Mr. Fleck was before us a few months ago for Bernice Park, that was in a residential area, that was a piece of property, a picturesque piece of property that was being converted into a park. In this case, it's facility maintenance, which is also permitted under the same kind of umbrella of parks, this is one of their uses that's there. So we did first consult with Mr. Zemanak to make sure that park facilities can be treated the same as a park, and the determination was yes, this is a necessary facility, needs to be centrally located to the Park District and everything that it serves. I think that Mr. Fleck did elaborate very, very well on the improvements that would be made. So the buildings would be improved, much better than the existing facilities that are there. There are substantial improvements that can be done in front of the building in the parkway, and that's off their property. That's why you hear him mention that it would be something in conjunction with the village. So he has been in communication with both Noriel Noriega and Mr. John Yader for what can occur in the parkway. But what is known is that the parking, the asphalt that is in the parkway now will be removed. They will address some of the screening issues by installing landscaping, installing the mesh kind of on the existing fencing that's there. But Mr. Fleck did also elaborate on the fact that staff is recommending that we look at the corridor-type improvements that we see or foresee along the Metro Railway, which is actually part of the strategic plan to try to improve that. We do encourage parks to work with staff to find some remedy for that. Right now, there is not anything proposed there, and I will let Jill elaborate on that. But if you look at it from a standpoint of, if this were to be redeveloped, if this were consolidated, we would address any new development to address that corridor improvement. So we're trying, we're trying to emphasize that there should be something that does occur on this property as well, and it's kind of a lead-by example so that of other properties along either side of it, we can hold the private business just as accountable for that. And as always, I'm available for any questions.
Just a quick clarification. Can you explain some of the history about why this has not developed residential over the years?
My understanding, and it's just what I've learned within the office, is there's an issue that there are existing businesses that are performing well and operating within their legal conforming status that are not interested in selling necessarily, that there, it is a very narrow lot in terms of if someone were to buy all these properties and build residential, there are constraints to build in that narrow of a dimension between Quincy and the railroad tracks. And beyond that, the price of the land, I don't know if that is a factor in hindering redevelopment or any other circumstances that may be there, and Jill may be able to elaborate.
Offhand, how does that, with the depth of that property compared to those that were built here along?
I would say it's probably about the same.
Should be about the same.
So it's not that it's impossible. It's not that it's necessarily undesirable. I think that product was something that was done before 2008 when the economy kind of turned, and, you know, we're very developer-driven, I don't know if there's a market for that same type of product. I can't say if that would come back into favor very quickly, I can't tell you what the market might do on that.
Was there something you wanted to say, Jill?
I'd like to talk about the landscaping portion, too. So as Joe mentioned, we appreciate the landscaping that's been proposed along East Quincy and working on right-of-way improvements with Public Works. It's important to have that nice front yard appearance along East Quincy, but there are also significantly more eyes on the railroad corridor. also significantly more eyes on the railroad corridor with thousands of commuters going by every day. As you saw in the staff memo, the parking lot is currently in disrepair, and we do recommend landscaping on private property in the rear of the property adjacent to the railroad. This can be done over time and phasing, just as we would require a business tenant to do, as Joe mentioned. Staff has dedicated, as I mentioned in the, with the previous special use, we've dedicated a significant amount of time to our strategic plan this past year. And one of our top 10 goals is beautifying our corridors, and one of those main corridors is the BNSF rail line. We've been, over the past year, we've been communicating with BNSF, you know, asking how to implement beautification efforts along there. I personally attended a two-day right-of-way seminar about beautification. We're going to be applying for grants, and we've dedicated a substantial amount of budget money toward this right-of-way, and we expect the tenants along the corridor to also, you know, screen their own properties on their private property. So that's why the recommendation is in the staff report.
Go to the public. Is there anybody in the public? Yes, sir.
I'm Dean Keel. I'm with IGE over at 130 East Quincy. I was involved in some of the work done previously about converting that to residential, which at the time was something that the village was encouraging us to do. We had agreed to that based upon the fact that at that point in time, they were going to convert that entire strip with all the businesses there to residential. When you make this change, then you effectively completely eliminate R5 as having anything to do with what's there, because there will never be a project that will be feasible with that small an area. That's one thing. The other thing that I'm very curious about, I have heard nothing about hours of operation for this new facility. I have heard nothing about what the impact for truck traffic will be. And those are issues that we're very concerned about, not just for ourselves, but for our neighbors. Because for one thing, as IGE has ramped back up in production there, obviously, we've already increased truck traffic on the streets to a degree. We're curious, what we're trying to avoid is a situation where we have things going on 24 hours a day or a constant stream of trucks like we used to have with building products, because all that's going to do is aggravate all the neighbors, and it's going to fall all on Rubco and IGE, because they can't do anything with the Park District, but they can sure come after us.
Okay.
And I speak from experience on that.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to respond to that, hours of operation?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I'd like to respond to all of it. Firstly, let me say that Park District and the village has an unbelievable relationship. Other communities in the area are just in awe of how well we work together, how well we get along, because that's not the case everywhere, and I'm sure Attorney Zemanek can probably attest to that as well. In fact, I previously, to this last year, in taking the executive director position, I was a 20-year shared employee with the Village Westmont. So I'm keenly aware of the street plan, the history, the desires of the village, the vision, and was keenly aware also of this comp plan change for Quincy Street. That was something we wrestled with. We knew that it could potentially be a concern, and until we had a number of conversations and we felt that the information had been shared with key leadership, we did not feel comfortable going forward in pursuing this. Now, once that happened, then we moved ahead. Therefore, again, we are sympathetic to the things that the village wants to do. That's why we want to be a good neighbor. We want to clean it up. In regards to hours of operation, truck use, completely different. We do not have any trucks that require a CDL license. All our trucks are light-duty trucks that can be driven with a regular driver's license. F-150s, one-ton dump trucks are the largest vehicles we have, and they, every day, go up and down Quincy Street already. So that's not going to change too much. In regards to hours, 6:00 AM is sometimes earliest we start, but it's very quiet. We kind of stagger our employees, so a couple come in at 6:00, a couple come in at 7:00. And then in the summer, when we have our college kids, we tend to have them start a little bit later so they can stay a little bit later. Typically, 4:30 is about when the gates lock. We do go seven days a week, but I'd be more than happy to take you literally across the train tracks to see our existing operation, how large it is, the trucks we have, and how that works, because it's really going to be very similar on the existing property or this new property.
My concern on that is, I don't know who is generating the noise or that part of it. I can only tell you that neighbors tell me that during times, certain times of the year, there's activity going on in that area across the tracks at 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning. And that's what they are desperately wanting to avoid.
Do you think that could have to do, that's also used by the village, right? Is that, is there any village, is that all yours?
The only thing I can think of at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, and we, believe me, when this happens, we all appreciate it, a water main break. Might have our water department working at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, loading up stone, getting the equipment, the backhoe, the trucks, and we're glad they're out there when that happens. So that's the only thing that I can think of.
But is no part of your operation requires anything beyond?
No. Fourth of July. Fourth of July, we are out there till 1:30 in the morning, cleaning up so Ty Warner Park looks like nothing ever happened. I'm going to give you my card in case you have any other questions.
Did you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing then, and we'll go to the commissioners. Let's start with Commissioner Thomas.
The screening on the back by the railroad.
Mm-hmm.
You had mentioned earlier about the kind of fencing that you would like to use, and, but since, would you need another kind of variance if you wanted to actually screen that? And trains are so far above the property.
They've got a downward perspective into the property.
Yeah, they're looking down in order to, are you, is, does the village limit how high the fence could go in order to block?
Yes, we do.
Then you two need to talk.
Yeah.
See, we've got a railroad man here, so he can tell us the rowing.
Same track. And the frequency, again, I think you've, my other question was going to be about coming and going of trucks and that, and that shouldn't be confused with maintenance and.
Park District.
But it's, this is the big, the front of the building where you're going to be using, working together with the village.
Correct.
To, which is, be a perfect opportunity for the two to help each other out.
Mm-hmm.
And I would encourage that. And since you already have the working relationship, that should not be a problem.
Yeah.
I'm envisioning. I'm just wondering about the height fence-wise, how high they're allowed to go, what needs to be done in order to actually block the, or can it even be done because of the height and?
Mind the perspective, the rail, the rails themselves sit about six feet, six, seven feet above our property. Then the passengers in the train cars are 10, 15 feet above that.
Right.
Anything we do now, it's going to take a very long time for it to be effective. So what we're simply asking is that we're not opposed to this, it's just, this is going to take a little bit of time for us to get through this as a capital improvement and to make these changes on this property. We just hope it wouldn't be contingent upon this one area on the north side, looking at the rail line, that we intend to be able to do something in the future, but right now, today, yeah, it's going to be a challenge, but we would love to go back there, clean it up, put some elbow grease into it, paint these buildings. They do need a facelift. We completely agree with you on that.
Commissioner Shaw?
This one is actually a little tough for me, because I do see the desire of a comprehensive plan not having these uses here, and this is kind of promoting a continuation of a use that's not pretty along that corridor. When I look at other communities to the west and east of us, they're far more attractive. I think the stretch between Cass Avenue and Downers Grove is one of the worst stretches in the suburbs. I ride the BNSF every day. It's pretty, it's pretty poor, it's pretty unsightly. The photos you sent, or that you, that you have passed out of their berm are equally distressing. And I guess I'd like to hear from the village what, Jill, you said that you had attended some conferences, what, or how can the village actually interact with the BNSF to make improvements?
So they've told us as long as we stay within a certain number of feet away from the center line, that we are able to work with them in terms of landscaping improvements, gateway signage, you know, beautification up and down that railroad. And we'd also like to work in conjunction with Clarendon Hills, because they have, you know, similar goals along there.
Okay.
Corner as well.
The Parkway in the front on the south, is that, is that, will be that be by the Park District or by the village?
It's going to be in conjunction. Both agencies working together.
Joint.
Yes, bringing our resources together to make that happen.
Okay. And then you said you were at the previous location on Burlington for how many years or decades?
I believe 31.
31 years.
Mm-hmm.
So I think my first concern is, I hear you absolutely on cost and perhaps schedule alone. And I think that what you're doing to the property as a whole is amazing, because like you said, you're giving it life again. It's going to look 10 times better just by moving in and it being activated. But I don't want to lose sight of the longer-term goal either, and some of these, like you're saying, you guys are willing and I'm sure desiring to beautify the north end eventually too, but I'm wondering, what is our responsibility or even options at this point to formalize that into something other than just a good intention at this time? And I don't think, maybe that's a question to the attorney.
Well, normally with a private developer, I would scream and holler, now's the time. You know, this is the one time the private developer will be in front of the board, we've got power with the special use ordinance. It's true, to a certain extent, with the Park District, but it's a bit of a unique relationship, two organizations that have worked extremely well together, and the village board may be inclined to say, we understand your financial difficulties, let's put this off, let's not even address it now.
You're not going anywhere.
We'll revisit it. I'll leave that to the village board. If the village board is so inclined, though, they can require that certain landscaping improvements be done, specify the general nature of them, specify an end date, 10 years, by which it must be planned, five years, whatever. Have some more specifics about the type of landscaping in the Parkway and how the costs are going to be shared for that. Nail those specifics down so it's not loosey-goosey. But again, that's something for the board to talk about.
Yeah, well, we can let the board talk about that. I just think you threw out $50,000, and I'm thinking $50,000 for a 30-year, let's say 30-year commitment, is not that much money. I mean, it's a lot of money right now, especially if you didn't budget for it, right? Because you didn't know it was coming, but.
I know what our capital fund's going to be in two years after acquiring this property and doing the things that we absolutely have to do. The water service for fire.
Right.
The roof, the Parkway, those things. And it's, it's a challenge.
Couldn't we ask the, that the Park District work with our staff here and having gotten the input of what's being done with the Burlington, and at least lay out some kind of future what you would try to do in order to satisfy that?
There's one thing that I'm open to as well, and Attorney Zemanek here has been part of drafting many of these. We have numerous intergovernmental agreements with the village. We want to work this into some kind of intergovernmental agreement. I'm not opposed to that, and I'm sure the Park Board would not be opposed to that as well. That way, it's not just floating out there, just hoping it gets accomplished.
What's your deadline to close?
Well, July 7th is our closing date.
Okay.
We also have a requirement, and I don't recall the date in June, of receiving the special use for zoning. I'm sure that has some leeway in there, but July 7th is our closing date.
Okay.
Commissioner Martell?
Well, it's a lot of information, and it sounds like there's a need for, two things come to mind. One is a need for a task force from the Burlington Northern and Clarendon Hills and the Park District and the village to have some discussions on all of this relative to the landscaping and so forth. And my second thought is, it sounds like with the closing, you're planning on the exterior, the Parkway, the water, the roof, all of those things that need to be done right away to get up and running.
Yeah, I've already heard from, Public Works actually wants to put the Parkway on their schedule for Public Works improvements in July.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Towards the, we're, you know, not wasting any time. So somewhere in there, too, I got to work on that water main.
Right.
Getting that before we start tearing things up.
So the $50,000 that you hadn't budgeted, but you can come up with relatively easily, would be for the first phase of the buildings, to get them up in working order?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that fair?
It's, we're looking, I'll tell you exactly how we're envisioning this would happen. We've got, we've got some money, and it's not nearly as much as we would like to have. But the first year, go in and start doing some of these exterior improvements, more on the front of the property as well, and the roof, cleaning it up for the neighborhood, getting some new utilities into the building. And then, over the winter time, when we have a little more freedom and we're not in the parks as much, start getting our crews in there and start doing some sweat equity, demoing, doing some of the things, as long as we have now permits taken care of with the building department. Then year two, continue on with the next phase of that, and maybe now we're on to the interior of the building, and we're looking at the restrooms and the HVAC and the electrical. So we know we still have a bit of a grace period in the property we're currently in on Burlington Street.
That was my next question. How long would you be able to stay there before you need to move equipment over?
Well, we don't know, and to be quite honest, Public Works doesn't know. The village manager isn't certain. What we do know is that at some point, it's going to happen, and as, as he shared with me, and I shared with him, we didn't want to be in a situation where we're kind of in now, but it's even more of an emergency where they say, oh, gosh, the funding's come through, or we're going to demo this property, and you're out of here in six months, and we haven't started anything.
And then that's a problem.
Yeah.
It's a problem.
Yeah. So we're in a much better situation now than we could have been otherwise.
And I totally agree with the landscaping piece of it, the secondary piece that needs to be improved from those train riders that view this every day. And I, does the Burlington Northern have any money associated with this? I mean, they're a principal part of the process, but are they going to pay for part of it?
No, no. This is all on our.
Their property looks the worst, but it's everybody else's problem.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's a shame. I wish they had a little more interest in it and a little more investment in it as well.
So they have to give their approval to go ahead with doing some of this work?
For us to make improvements and beautify the corridor.
But we paid for it.
And remember, the railroad was here long before we were. They have some.
That's why we're here.
It is.
Why we're here, yeah. Okay. Well, those, I'm very supportive, obviously, of getting the new building up and going. And those are my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Carmine?
Bob, can you tell us about the?
Bob, can you tell us about the lease agreement with the WPB? Is it a long-term, next number of years or?
No, we would purchase it outright.
Oh, okay. I thought this was a.
No, we're now looking to.
It was a purchase from WPB leasing.
Yeah, because we don't want to be here again in 30 years.
Okay. That WPB owns both the 134 addressed to the west.
Correct.
And the 200 to the east. That 138 addressed between them is an active business.
Mm-hmm. I believe that's IGE? Oh, that's Rebco, okay.
Okay, because IGE's onto the west of year 130. And, okay, so you gentlemen also lease from WPB? You own your, okay.
I believe everybody, that was their own, their own properties.
Okay, I was just curious particularly about 138.
Yeah, and WBP, I believe it has been in the family since the 50s.
That's really all the questions I had. I think I see all sides of this and I'm supportive.
Just for clarity, the 130.
Some difficult things here, but I think it's the right, the right move.
Okay, thank you. Just for clarity, 134, the property that is just to the west, it's a small lot. We're not proposing to do anything with that except for maybe clean up the proper, the parkway area in front. There's no utilities on it, it's two open-air structures.
Will you be having skid steers, front-end loaders, and actual material on the site stored for use elsewhere?
The only thing we're looking to do, and this would be great for us because Public Works has it at Water Department and at Street Division. If you could see, in the northeast corner of the property, there's this open-air structure bay. They have the concrete sides going about six, seven feet up, and then it's got a roof attached to those as well. Those would be areas for us to store baseball mix, mulch, sand, gravel, those kinds of things. We don't have that luxury right now. We have to, again, we only have little one-ton dump trucks. So, if we're getting it ourselves, that's how we do it. We run over to Tamling's over in Willowbrook and we haul it back out. Inefficient, time-consuming, a little more expensive. That would be a great luxury for us to have that type of storage as well. But we're also proposing, again, out in front of that, to screen that with vegetation, with the juniper trees and the windscreen mesh across the gates.
He didn't answer the question about the front-end loaders or anything.
Those would be parked underneath the other structures when they're not in use.
Okay, but they will be used on-site.
They will be used on-site, but we have, again, smaller, our equipment is sandplay equipment compared to what Public Works has. We have, we have much smaller equipment.
Will they beep when they back up? Like, I was curious, the residents across the street.
Mm-hmm.
It probably was the case with the former user years ago, their trucks probably beeped all the time when they're backing up, but it's a.
Well, the drywall.
That's a requirement now on the trucks we also buy from State of Illinois on state bid. They have to come with that.
Yeah. And Bobcats and all that, they probably do the same.
Would you be willing to, as a condition of the special use, be able to come up with some kind of a long-range plan to cooperate with the village and with our zoning people here and getting some kind of a plan to do some work along the Burlington in long range, even though we know that you're pressed now for finances? But we really, as we said, if you were a new one coming in here, normally with a residence or anything, that would be an absolute condition for anything we would grant. So, at least to give some kind of a commitment that you're willing in the future to work with a particular type of plan.
And I'm very interested in the discussions Mrs. Ziegler's been having with the railroad and some of those, you know, possible grants that are out there and what's happening. Because obviously, if this happens, we'll be a neighbor as well. And I have some experience with the improvements we've done here on the metro line when I was involved in those projects. So, I'm willing to be a part of that. I'll talk to the village board about, you know, working with them and trying to come up with some long-range plan.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion before we have a reading of findings of fact? If not, we'll have a reading, findings of fact.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is PZ 17-010, Westmont Park District and WBP Leasing Corp regarding 134 and 200 East Quincy Street in Westmont. Request for a special use to allow park maintenance facilities in the R5 General Residence District. Criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Findings of fact, the proposed Park District use of the property will constitute an improvement to the property which has sat vacant for eight years. The office and storage use will occur within a fenced area and the applicant will approve the property in public right-of-way with enhanced landscaping. The proposed use will not generate adverse noise, light, dust, or traffic and will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. Findings of fact, the applicant will provide aesthetic improvements to the property and vastly improve the condition of the property from current conditions. The applicant will discontinue its current maintenance facility on Burlington Avenue, the use of which has not impacted the surrounding residential properties for the past 32 years. This use will be screened and is consistent with the legal non-conforming industrial and commercial uses to the east and west and the BNSF wherever it checks to the north. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Findings of fact, surrounding property is fully developed and the use of this property will not impede future redevelopment. There's been no interest historically in combining this property with adjacent properties for multifamily residential development, in part due to shallow lot depth of these properties. Criteria number four, that adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Findings of fact, the property is currently served by adequate utilities, accessways, and other necessary facilities. Criteria number five, that the adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and ingress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Findings of fact, the property contains sufficient ingress and ingress to the public streets and the use will not generate adverse traffic on the public streets. Criteria number six, that the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. Findings of fact, the proposed use meets all other requirements of the R5 General Residence District and no variances are sought for this use.
If you agree? 100% in agreement? We have a motion for special use to allow park maintenance facility in R5 General Residence District and will also add that the commissioner agrees to work with the staff in coming up with a long-range plan for the beautification or along the rail corridor. So moved. Second. Motion, second by Commissioner Carmichael and Commissioner Thomas. We have a roll call, please. Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Van Buren?
Yes.
The ayes have it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to be brought up at this time this evening?
I just wanted to mention, in our joint meeting, we had expressed that we would try to keep you updated when projects that have come through this commission come online. I think two properties in particular, although they've been up for a little while, are finally receiving COs or will be receiving COs shortly, and that's 350 East Richmond, which was a variance to build a house on a substandard lot size that I think is nearing completion. And then also 25 West 63rd, which is the Express Oil, is finally receiving its final, they're finally finishing up the last bits of the landscaping, although they have been open for several months.
I'd do two things I would ask. Is there anything going on with the bank on Cass Avenue?
From the south.
I think it was the heritage bank. Is there anything?
The site needs to be cleaned up. I just looked at it yesterday.
Yeah, we usually have property maintenance complaints around this time of year with the weeds, which we follow up on. We do have a lot of inquiries right now, but nothing has been established formally.
Okay, and the mall at 63rd and Cass, half of it is shut down because of a water problem that apparently the landlord doesn't see fit to remedy. Is there anything in the wind at all for that property?
We're also currently working with developer interest in that and we should have something, hopefully, to share in the next couple of months.
Good. Anything else? Call for a motion adjourned? So moved. Motion by Commissioner Thomas?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sharp. All in favor? All right. We are adjourned.